I'd like to now call this meeting of the Coventry Town Council to order at 6:32 PM. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Here.
Councilmember Lugwick?
Here.
Councilmember Shockley?
Here.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Here.
President Lima?
Here. Please rise for presentation of our colors.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Thank you to the Coventry Police Department Honor Guard for presenting our colors this evening. Emergency evacuation plan in the event of an emergency, those present here in town council chambers can exit out either back door of council chambers, either to the front lawn or to the back parking lot. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of December 29th, 2022 executive session?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion from Vice President LeBlanc, second from Councilman Pasqua, any discussion? Clerk, did you receive any edits for these minutes?
Yeah.
Hearing no further discussion, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Lugwick?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Moving on next to public acknowledgements and commendations. This evening, we have a National Police Week 2023 proclamation. I'd like to ask Sergeant McCoy and, sorry Pendola, what's your, what's your title? Detective Pendola to come forward, please. All right, I will read the proclamation. Whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Day in the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. Established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And whereas public safety officers of the Coventry Police Department stand watch over our citizens, selflessly risking their lives to protect individuals, families, neighborhoods, and property against crimes. And whereas Monday, May 15th, 2023 is observed nationally as Peace Office Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And whereas the Coventry Police Department, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered dedicated service to the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Coventry Town Council hereby proclaims May 14th to the 20th, 2023 as National Police Week within the town of Coventry. And hereby publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Throughout the town of Coventry, we urge and encourage all citizens to take time to appreciate our public safety officers and honor all peace officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. In witness thereof, I tear into set my hand and cause the seal of the town to be affixed this ninth day of May, 2023. Thank you. Comments or discussion from members of the council on the proclamation? Councilman Pasqua?
Just wanted to make a comment on the Coventry Police Department. I wear two hats, a lot of people know I work fire and rescue in the town and I work with these professionals constantly. And they are among the best in business. So we, I'm glad to have them and this is well deserved.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions, discussion? Councilman Ludwig?
Thank you very much for attending tonight for the colors and accepting the proclamation. Thank you for putting it forward to the leadership of the council. I have been in town for approximately six and a half years. I've needed the police department personally. I've also met with them professionally, meaning the Citizens Police Academy that Counselor Shockley and I attended a year and a half ago. They have always been professional, extremely respectful. And that is also what I've heard from my neighbors and colleagues. So thank you very much for your service.
Any further discussion? Thank you. Moving on to public comment on docketed items only, are there any members of the public here with a public comment on docketed items? Just come forward and state your name and address for the record, please, and make sure the mic is turned on.
On?
Yes.
Excuse me. President and members of the council. I was here last month. You may recall I had provided some research on Johnson's Pond in PDF format, rather voluminous. And at the same time, I had passed along all my correspondence to state officials regarding the pond and areas that I thought that they had to do a little bit more on. Same time, I left you folks with, I guess, a plea to involve the state and the Quinick Reservoir Company in a suit. So in the month that's taken place since, Speaker of the House Chikachi has responded to me on the General Assembly's role. He says, thank you for the email. I and the General Assembly generally do not take positions on cases that are in current litigation in the court system. I suggest you work with the AG office. I'm still looking for a response from the Attorney General on my research. But to just kind of summarize, in this past month, I've also come across because of the state constitution on the home rule amendment, because of the town of Coventry adopting home rule in 1972. I believe town of Coventry has a good argument to pursue involving the state and Quinick Reservoir Company in an ultimate resolution for Johnson's Pond. I don't expect you folks to discuss that or offer anything on it tonight. I wanted to make sure you got my letter this week. And I'm here to answer any questions if you had on my research. Maybe at least got to the bullet point. I know my son says he's going to prescribe it to his patients as a sleep aid, so. But with that in mind, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, thank you for your time.
Thank you, yes, the clerk did pass along your letter and we do have your contact information. It was passed along to the whole council, so I would encourage council members to reach out to him. Should they have any questions or want to discuss with him further? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Any other members in council chambers this evening? Public comment on docketed items? Any members of the public on Zoom? Public comment on docketed items? Going once, going twice, three times? Public comment on docketed items is now closed. Moving on to public hearings, can I hear, could I have a motion to continue matters A, B, and C for public hearing to the May 23rd council meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion from Vice President LeBlanc, second from Councilman Pasqua. These items are just not ready to be heard this evening, so we're moving them, just in the sake of everybody's time. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Lugwick?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Moving on to section four licenses. Item A, application for new victualling license, Mega Tyoka Incorporated, Doing Businesses, Quality Fuel, and Mart 585 Tyoka Avenue, Coventry. Madam Clerk, I believed, I believe we received communication from this applicant that he would like it continued again. With that being said, we'll get a motion first, yeah. Do I have a motion to continue the application to the May 23rd meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Motion from Councilmember Shockley?
Second.
Second from Councilman Pasqua, discussion? If we could let in the applicant? Good evening, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, town council members. My name is Derek Martin. I am the manager of Quality Fuel at 585 Tyoka Avenue.
And can you just confirm, I believe the clerk said you were in contact and you need to continue this item?
Yes, that is correct. I was in touch with the Department of Health today. And the inspection is going to be happening either at the end of this week or the beginning of next week. And I also just need to get the fire chief in here to finish up his inspection as I've completed all the steps that he asked for me to complete.
Okay, so do you believe you'll be ready by the May 23rd meeting?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I was trying my hardest to get it done before this meeting, but it just, everything fell against me. But yes, I will absolutely have it done by then.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
And Councilmember Ludwig?
Do we still have Derek with us?
Clerk, he's still there.
I think it was Derek, correct? So. Is the, is the, I don't know if you know this, but is the owner of the business here, so Quality Fuel and Mart 585, or at 585 Tyoka? Is that the same owner as this, I'm sorry?
Sorry, yes, Umar Saleem, the owner of Covmart at 1100 Main Street.
That's the smoke shop at the intersection? So I do, I do just want to raise the council's attention. We are having massive problems with this business owner. He is shining 40-foot lights into residents' homes, all surrounding his property. He has recently acknowledged the interaction from our solicitor and the town manager. And we will be heading into municipal court at some point in the next few weeks. Because this problem has gotten so bad, it is literally like spotlights coming into your home. This was something that's been happening over the last two plus years. It was more recently brought to our attention over the last few months because the residents finally came in and said, is this really okay to do? And the planning office confirmed, no, this is not okay. And we got the ball moving in on the town side. So I feel very badly for the residents that have been negatively impacted by this business owner's choice. You can see the spotlights if you drive by this business. If you drive by other businesses, there are no spotlights. So I would like the council to keep that in mind. And I'd ask for this business owner to please consider really working with the town manager and the solicitor on rectifying this situation before we continue seeing these businesses on the docket. Thank you.
Can I wait on that for a second?
Yes.
So I understand the complaints. I've actually, he had me kind of be the voice for that. He had me step in and speak to the zoning rep for the town council. And I worked with her and I got one of the signs removed that she asked to have removed from the building. And I am working on those lights as we speak. That isn't my business. I have no real partnership with that business. I'm just running the one on Tyoka. But you know, being employed by Umar, he has me pretty much, you know, helping out where I can. So we are working on that issue. I'm trying to help him work on that issue because I'm not trying to have it go any further than that. But just, I just want you to know that it is being addressed.
Thank you, Derek. I don't think that it's your personal issue by any means.
Yes.
But, and I'm always happy to reach out to the owner if necessary. However, the lights are a major problem. The residents are having a problem. And this is not, this is not good. So I'll leave you with that and say thank you for your attempted help. And I represent the residents in that location. And this is a very serious problem, so I'm making sure that the council is aware of that.
I completely understand. I live across the street. I could see the lights from my home as well. So I completely understand. You know, he's my boss, I don't want to speak badly about him, but I get it. I get where they're coming from. I understand. So that's why I said, you know, I'm working on it to get it rectified. So I'm, he doesn't live there, I do, so I get it. I'm trying to get it rectified.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, I appreciate your time.
Any further discussion from members of the council?
Madam President, if I may?
Solicitor Angel?
Given the concerns of the council with respect to the owner of this business and his owning other businesses that seem to be troublesome to residents, it might perhaps serve the council well to have the clerk send a letter to the owner and request his presence at the next council meeting on this particular license so that the council can address their concerns directly to that owner.
Okay.
I think that would be a great idea. Honestly, I think that would be a great idea.
All right.
Do I need to motion for that, President Lima?
Yes, so I would say we proceed with the motion to continue and then we'll do a separate motion after that for the directive to the clerk's office. Any further discussion on the motion to continue? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Lugwick?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Do I hear a motion to direct the clerk's office to send a letter to the owner of Mega Tyoka Avenue, Inc. to represent the business at the continued hearing on May 23rd?
I'll make that motion.
Motion from Councilwoman Ludwig?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Shockley, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Lugwick?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you as well.
Moving on to item B, application for 60-day Hawker license, Keystone Novelties Distributors LLC, John F. May, to be located at 6 Reservoir Road as per Coventry Code 183-4, June 22nd to 2023 to July 5th, 2023. This is on page 22 of your packet. Do I hear a motion to approve the application?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion from Vice President LeBlanc, second from Councilmember Shockley. Is the applicant here this evening? Is the applicant on Zoom? Mr. Pirlo, any, or I'm sorry, is the chief here? Chief, any comments on this license? Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on the license? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Lugwick?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Item C, new mobile food establishment license, Pam's Grill on the Go, Michael Asis yearly license, page 24 in your packets. Do I hear a motion to approve the license?
I'll make the motion.
Motion from Vice President LeBlanc, second from Councilman Pasqua. Is anyone here to represent the business this evening? Come on forward. Just make sure the microphone's on and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Michael Asis, 2 Zaw Street, North Providence, Rhode Island.
And if you just want to talk a little bit about the request for the license?
Yes, we're doing some work for the school department, mobile food truck. And we just think that we have the right paperwork to do it legally. And we're just requesting to have a permit to be able to work in the town.
Great. I need a further discussion on the license? Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Lugwick?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Item D, new mobile food establishment license, Atomic Blonde Ice Cream, Laura Sebastian yearly license. Do I hear a motion to approve the license?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion from Vice President LeBlanc, second from Councilmember Shockley. Is anyone present here from Atomic Blonde Ice Cream? Come on forward, just state your name and address for the record. Make sure the microphone's turned on. Just pushed up, yep.
My name's Deborah Tebow. My address is 59 Woodmont Street, Providence, Rhode Island, 02907.
And just talk about your license request today.
Want to do the fireworks and the Billy Gilman concert?
Great. Any discussion from members of the council? Thank you so much.
Hope to see you there.
Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Lugwick?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Item E, application for Class F license, Church of Our Lady of Chestahova, 455 Washington Street, Coventry, June 16th and 17th, 2023, 5:30 PM to 9:00 PM Parish Festival. Do I hear a motion to approve the license?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Motion from Vice President LeBlanc, second from Councilman Pasqua. Do we have representatives from Our Lady of Chestahova? Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Harry Larson, 3 Peachtree Lane, Coventry, Rhode Island. Correction to one thing, the time is 5 o'clock, 5:30. So it's 5 to 9 PM. This is our annual parish festival. It's been held for more than 70 years. We have a police detail, fire detail, fire inspections for the tent. So we're in compliance with all the requirements. We have the state police approval for the raffles that take place. We hope to see each and every one of you there. It's our annual fundraiser, it's our biggest fundraiser for the parish.
Any discussion from members of the council? Thank you very much. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Lugwick?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Do I hear a motion to waive the fee for the license?
I'll make the motion.
Motion from Vice President LeBlanc?
I'll second it.
Second from Councilmember Shockley, any discussion? Councilman Ludwig?
Just wanted to confirm, is this, is this a fundraising event? Because it sounded like it was, I'm sorry, I didn't totally understand that. Is it fundraising for just the church or for the charity?
Just, yeah, come on up.
Yes, this is our largest fundraiser. We sell, I mean Polish food's a big piece of the fundraising part, but we have American food, we have some raffles, things like that, baskets. There's also the cow chip bingo, which is very popular. Cow chip bingo? Yeah, so you pick a square and if the cow lands, then you win the bingo. So it's pretty, is it?
But it's just for the parish.
It's just for the parish activities. The money stays all within parish activities, the church and other activities that we have going on at the parish. So there's about 600 parishioners, most of them in the Tuxedo Valley area.
Any further discussion? Thank you. Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Lugwick?
I've seen.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
President, Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
So four in the affirmative, one abstention, motion passes.
Moving on to item five, election and or appointment of town officials, town council appointments, Board of Canvassers. This was continued from our last meeting. I just want to confirm a couple of updates. I did confirm with the Chair of the Democratic Town Committee that the Brad Inman, that's the alternate, is the senior and not the junior. So he's retired, he's not a state employee, so that he can remain. And then we did receive an updated list from the GOP, which now has Mike Madonna's name on the list. So with that, I'll ask, what's the pleasure of the council? Vice President LeBlanc?
The Chair of the Board of Canvassers asked for Michael Madonna to be reinstated. I would make that motion.
I would second that.
Motion from Vice President LeBlanc, second by Councilmember Shockley, discussion? Vice President LeBlanc?
I just wanted to add, he's been doing this for a long time. The Chair said that there's a lot to learn, there's a learning curve for anybody to do. He's been doing a great job, so that's why I had made the motion.
No, I think I was told he's traveling in New Jersey for work. Councilmember Shockley?
Can I just have it explained again? I believe it was explained at the last meeting. The Board of Canvassers has broken up and it has to be a certain number of Democrats and Republicans, correct?
Yes, so right now, there's, the Democrat seat is, there's a Democrat that's the Chair and then Julie Stefanic is a Republican. So this could go to either Democrat or Republican, it's a swing seat. So you just can't have all of it be one party. And then there's alternates as well, there's one Democrat alternate and one Republican alternate. Any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember?
Just the, yeah, come on up.
But yes, this is our largest fundraiser. We sell, I mean Polish food's the big piece of the fundraising, but we have American food, we have some raffles, things like that, baskets. Um, there's also the cow chip bingo, which is very popular. Cow chip bingo? Yeah, so you think you pick a square and the cow lands, then you win the bingo. So it's pretty, is it?
But it's just for the parish.
It's just for the parish activities. The money stays all within parish activities, the church and other activities that we have going on at the parish. So there's about six hundred parishioners, most of them in the Texas Valley area.
Any further discussion? Thank you. Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Council member Pasqua?
Yes.
Council member Ludwig?
I've seen.
Council member Shockley?
Yes.
Uh, President, Vice President, uh, LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
So four in the affirmative, one abstention, motion passes.
Moving on to item five, election and or appointment of town officials, town council appointments, board of canvassers. Um, this was continued from our last meeting. Um, I just want to confirm a couple of updates. Um, I did confirm with the chair of the Democratic Town Committee that the Brad Inman, that's the alternate, is the senior and not the junior. So he's retired, he's not a state employee, so that he can remain. Um, and then we did receive an updated list from the GOP, um, which now has Mike Madonna's name on the list. Um, so with that, I'll ask, uh, what the, what's the pleasure of the council? Vice President LeBlanc?
Uh, the chair of, um, the Board of Canvassers asked for Michael Madonna to be reinstated. Um, I would make that motion.
I would second that.
Motion from Vice President LeBlanc, second by Council member Shockley, discussion? Vice President LeBlanc?
I just wanted to add, um, he's been doing this for a long time. Um, the chair said that there's a lot to learn. Uh, there's a big learning curve for anybody new. Um, he's been doing a great job, so, uh, that's why I had made the motion.
Um, no, he, I, I think I was told he's traveling in New Jersey for work. Council member Shockley?
Um, can I just have it explained again? I believe it was explained at the last meeting. The Board of Canvassers has broken up and it has to be a certain number of Democrats and Republicans, correct?
Yes, so, um, right now there's a, the Democrat seat is, there's a Democrat that's the chair. And then Julie Stefanic is a Republican, so this could go to either Democrat or Republican. It's a swing seat. So you just can't have all of it be one party. And then there's alternates as well. There's one Democrat alternate and one Republican alternate. Any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Council member Pasqua?
Yes.
Council member Ludwig?
Yes.
Council member Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to take the agenda out of order.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion from Vice President LeBlanc, second from Council member Pasqua, discussion? I'm just looking to move up, um, the executive session on the CTA. We have quite a few people here for that one. Any discussion questions? Clerk, please take the role.
Council member Pasqua?
Yes.
Council member Ludwig?
Yes.
Council member Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Uh, do I hear a motion to go into executive or closed session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law Section forty-two dash forty-six dash five A two, rework session pertaining to collective bargaining of the Coventry Teachers Alliance contract? And closed session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law Section forty-two dash forty-six dash five A two, relitigation involving Social Holdings LLC and the Town of Coventry CA number KC twenty twenty dash zero seven six nine.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion from Vice President LeBlanc, second from Councilman Pasqua, discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Council member Pasqua?
Yes.
Council member Ludwig?
Yes.
Council member Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
We'll now go into executive session.
Sorry. I can't do the Bruins in that. Which one is five? Now that I see it.
I was gonna say, I don't remember getting requests. Let's ask them. I don't remember getting this. I might have Pearson.
Members of the public, the council met an executive with closed session pursuant to round general law section forty-two dash forty-six dash five A two rework session pertaining to collective bargaining of the Coventry Teachers Alliance contract and closed session pursuant to round general law section forty-two dash forty-six dash five A two re litigation involving social holdings LLC in the town of Coventry CA number KC twenty twenty dash zero seven six nine. Do you have a motion to close executive session or come out of executive session?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Vice President LaBlanc, second by Councilmember Shockley. Any discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative.
Do I hear a motion to seal the minutes of executive session?
I'll make the motion.
Do I need to do it particular order?
No.
Okay. A motion from Vice President LaBlanc?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Shockley. Discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Members of the public, a discussion took place. A vote was taken.
It was a vote to retain experts as needed in the social holdings litigation in an amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In the vote was unanimous, five, zero.
Thank you. Uh, moving on, going to go to report of other town officers and officials. Item C, Kevin Uh, moving on, going to go to report of other town officers and officials. Item C, Kevin McGee, Director of Public Works, updates and fees. So on page one fifteen of our packets.
Uh, Madam President, uh, we asked Director McGee to reevaluate some of the fees that are being paid right now. Um, I'll have him come up and explain further. Um, to my knowledge, they haven't been changed in fifteen to twenty years. So, um, I'll let him move further, but that's the reason for this being on the docket.
Thank you.
Good evening. Now, this was first brought before the prior town manager and town council, asking for these fees to be adjusted back then. And thank God that Mr. Perillo decided to put it onto the agenda so that we can take action. Some of these items that we have here, excuse me, residents are even coming to us surprised that we haven't raised our rates in some years, expecting to be paying more. And we told them it was in the works and we will be doing so fairly quickly if the council agreed to it. Simply go back to the, you know, look at, if you look at the mattress, the soil wet pickup, we were charging seventy dollars. Seventy dollars is what we're actually charged for to dispose of it at the landfill. And it wasn't accounting for the ten dollar fee that we would go to pick it up. So that's why we've asked to raise it to eighty dollars. They could drop them off for free, but if we have to pick them up. But it's a regular, regular one. We need to be able to account for the cost with the fuel cost and what our plastic bags that we put them in, uh, as one of the items. Same thing with the, uh, metal goods, the, um, freezers dumped, uh, dehumidifiers, refrigerators, the costs have gone up to dispose of them, especially with the freon. And we're trying to look, so we're not spending any more money than we have to spend, asking to raise five dollars. The dump pass, we haven't raised that since the early nineties. It's twenty dollars for four trips, which causes them five dollars each. We've asked them to double that to forty dollars, which would be ten dollars for the four trips. Uh, and then, as you can see, everything else, see the tires, the compost bins, trash carts, those are all based upon upcoming costs that we've had incurred with the cost rising in those plastic items. Re- requesting that the town council agree to this so that we can get it implemented for June first.
Um, before we entertain discussion, um, I'll just entertain a motion to approve proposed, uh, fee increases for DPW.
I'll make the motion.
Motion from Vice President LeBlanc.
I'll second.
Second from Councilmember Shockley. Vice President LeBlanc.
Um, question for you, Mr. McGee. On, on the dump pass, I totally understand, you know, uh, paying ten dollars, uh, per trip. Why is it that a homeowner can call and, and get a pickup, um, where we actually send employees out to their house? And correct me if I'm wrong, they're allowed to do a heavy pickup and they don't pay anything for that. So why wouldn't we try to charge something for that here?
Historically, the reason why this was, was instituted about fifteen years ago was the town was getting inundated with, uh, commercial vendors that would go and do house cleanouts or whatever and be paid for and come and dump it here. And there was no way to be able to determine who was a Coventry resident or not, because they were just coming here and dumping without no restrictions. They decided back then that if it's curbside, we know they're a Coventry resident. And anybody that brought it here, they would be charged to bring it here, but we would know where the Coventry residents were. We were only picking up Coventry trash. That was the reasoning that was done back fifteen years ago.
I understand that. Um, but again, uh, wouldn't we have an opportunity to make some additional revenue for somebody? Uh, I mean, maybe we give the first, you know, two or three calls free. And then after that, it's a, I don't know, twenty dollar charge, thirty dollar charge. Wouldn't it help offset some of our fuel and our employee costs?
If this council decides to, uh, put a minimum or maximum on the amount of free pickups at curbside, we could easily do that as part of this change.
I, I certainly think that we should.
Going along with what you're saying, how many curbside pickups would the average person do? It, it just seems like something that may just have a charge. If you're doing a bulk pickup as opposed to. Yeah.
I was just throwing it out.
Um, Director McGee, what's, are you going to homes multiple times for bulk pickup in a year? Or is it kind of, most people just do it once and that's it?
The majority of people do it once, maybe twice a year, spring and a fall. But there are some people that try to abuse it. And that's why we actually mock on our bulk pickup list where the addresses are. And if we're going there on a regular basis, like once a month, we'll investigate that and stop that. Same, it's something as simple also as yard waste bags. We're going to places that are generating fifty, sixty bags of yard waste every week. And the yard is not that big. And we're finding out the contractors are actually taking the bags and putting them there. So we're investigating that to try to save us money also. But if there's a way for somebody to get around the law, they'll do it.
Counselor Ludwig.
So I, I don't have any issue proving the list if that's what you're looking for from the council. Um, if separately, it sounds like at least some of us agree that there should be a charge for pickup. Um, I'm in favor of no minimum. I used the service a few months ago, and I believe I spoke to, um, uh, Melissa in your office about pickup. I mean, it was the easiest thing I've ever done. It was all free. So, and I'm, I would have gladly paid twenty bucks for that. I was trying to get that stuff the heck out of my house. So I, I definitely think free pickup is, is, it's not sustainable for the town. So if that's something that maybe you and or manager Perillo can bring back to us on your plan for how you want to address pickup, that I would be in favor of getting that through as well.
We, I would agree with that. We would have to change the ordinance to adjust to make it all pay, all pickups would be chargeable, whether they drop it off or pick up at curbside.
Okay, so we have ordinance work to do then.
To do that, yes.
All right. So just, so then just tonight, we should tackle this list. Okay. Um, Councilmember Shockley.
You'd mentioned, um, for the soiled or wet mattress, it's a seventy dollar fee. Are we charged any sort of fee to drop the other mattresses off at the landfill?
We're under the mattress recycling program, whether if they're clean and dry, we don't have to pay. They come and pick them up and there's no charge to it. If we have to pick up a mattress curbside, we charge the people ten dollars, which, and we're asking to increase that to fifteen, which would account for the cost of the bag. So our, so our workers don't have to touch somebody's sleeping area. And then the ten dollars for the, uh, the fuel. So.
So there's no bag involved if someone drops it off here?
Correct. That's their own, their own measures.
Further discussion for members of the council? Any other comments?
No, if you folks decide to go forward, I will come back within the next few weeks with a request for revision to these solid waste ordinance and, uh, accommodate the suggestions that you've made tonight.
Okay, great.
If, if I could, Madam President, if, if Mr. McGee through the chair would like to submit those suggestions to the town manager, we can get an ordinance before the council for the council to take a look at.
Yeah. So if you want to submit what you think should be the price for bulk pickup, um, to Dan, um, then we can go from there.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing done, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Ludwig.
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley.
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to move on to item B, Steven Angel Solicitor, um, report.
Thank you, um, Madam President. So, uh, two things. Uh, first thing, the, uh, investment policy and finance ordinances shouldn't be here. So I'd asked, uh, you continue that if it's okay, uh, to a subsequent meeting. Uh, the solar lease agreement on the landfill is a proper subject matter for here. Uh, and I'm going to cede my time as I understand it. There are a variety of folks who've come to speak on this, uh, and I'll give my comments at the end.
Thank you. Um, did, do we have representatives from Amaresco who are making the presentation this evening?
Good evening, uh, and thank you for working so late. We appreciate it. Um, my name is Greg Lucini. I'm the CEO of Watershed Solar Development. Um, I've been in business here in Rhode Island for thirty five years, my electronics business. And I'm here to talk to you tonight about our renewable energy business where we develop landfill on primarily on landfills and brownfields across the country. We are partners with Watershed Geo. Uh, Watershed Geo is the company that developed and sold the turf that's on your, your landfill in here in Coventry. And that product was selected by, um, the PRP group in connection with the town. And, uh, it was, uh, engineered by GZA. And Ed Summerlee is here and he could answer any questions you might have about that, um, representing GZA. When the landfill closure was designed, it was done with solar in mind. We had already done the Cranston landfill, um, off of Pontiac Avenue, which is, I'll call it a sister project to this one that's been operating for two years. And when we had our ribbon cutting, uh, Rhode Island, uh, DEM Director Terry Gray came out and said, it is the best example of responsible solar development he'd ever seen. And your project will be exactly the same. And it's something I think everybody can be proud of. We can develop, you know, five and a half megawatts of solar power without cutting down one tree, no bulldozers, no disturbance, nothing affecting habitats. That's all been done. And the status of the project is that we're fully permitted. We have worked through the planning and zoning process with the town of Coventry. Um, we are ready to, uh, move forward with a building permit with the town. Um, Rydam has signed off on, uh, the, the landfill post closure use as solar. Um, and we also have a fully executed, uh, agreement with National Grid, allow, uh, Rhode Island Energy, allowing us to interconnect. And we have the power already sold to off takers. So we are really ready to go. Um, and we're really excited about this project and we hope, we hope that the town, uh, is as well. So we, uh, we provided a PowerPoint presentation, which I think may have been included in your packets. It's late, so I'm not going to go through this whole thing. Um, I'm going to spare you all that. Um, so I had a couple of objectives. One was to just update you on the status of the project, because we were in front of this board. I think most of the members are the same. The last time we were here, um, we received unanimous approval to move forward with the, uh, letter of intent lease. And, um, you know, we've, we've followed through and we've done everything that we, that we need to do now. So, um, one of the objectives for me to speak to you tonight is to introduce it to Amaresco. Um, my company, we develop solar projects, working in conjunction with Watershed Geo in our partnership. And, but we don't, we are not long-term owner operators. So what we do is we identify through all of the country who would be our partners. And in this case, we selected Amaresco. And we did it for a couple of reasons, namely their experience with landfill solar. They have done a lot of them. Um, and we can get into the details about that if you like, but also their financial stability. They're a publicly traded company, very well known and respected in the industry. So we think they're going to be a great long-term owner operator for this project. They are the, they will be the tenant or the lesssey and you folks will be the lessor. So as we were going through the process of, um, developing the project, we negotiated with the town, um, the lease rates for it. Um, the town hired Balance Rock Energy, who's an expert in this market, to give the town an evaluation of the lease rates. That was all gone through, um, competitive, uh, the consultant talked to competitors and he negotiated with us the lease rate, which we've agreed to. So that did go through that entire process and it was managed under the, uh, two, two town managers prior, uh, Ed, um, I forget how you pronounce his last name. Was he gone? Was he? Thank you. Uh, so that was all done under Ed. Um, at this point, we are ready to move forward and we would like to ask the council to consider, um, approval of the lease, uh, so that we can, we can actually move the pro- project forward. It's really, really the lease and the solar power agreement are all waiting for. And, um, if the council feels appropriate and that, and the town solicitor, uh, agrees, we would like to see a vote on that. If we couldn't have a vote tonight, we would like to ask you to consider potentially at your next meeting.
Solicitor Angel had a question.
So I have a question. The, uh, Balance Rock Energy Analysis, this is the first time I've heard those words. I've been asking for the last three weeks or more.
Sure.
For the economic analysis behind this and have tracked down everybody involved in this. And nobody has it. Nobody's seen it. Um, and so if you have that, I would love to see it. So would Manager Perillo.
Okay. So I can tell you that Balance Rock did not work for me. They worked for the town. I don't have any internal communications, but what we do have is we have, uh, newspaper articles, meeting minutes from the meetings that were held in these chambers, uh, on that topic. Um, Balance Rock, it's documented that they went out to third parties and, um, they determined that the lease rate that we negotiated was, was market rate and that that's how that was arrived at. Um, it's been well documented. I can.
All right. I guess we'll try to find contact information for them to track that down.
Actually, if you have the contact information, I'll take it so that I can track it down.
Sure.
We don't have it.
What I could do is I can give it to you and I'll also give your contact information. I could potentially, uh, Mr. Perillo, um, to, uh, I would have Dan Joyce, he's the principal follow-up with you. And he certainly would have whatever communication you had between you. But that was a well-vetted process. Um, we proposed an amount, he countered, we negotiated, we agreed, and that's how the rate was established.
Any additional questions?
Greg, the, I know the agreement is between your company and the town.
Correct.
This is going to be sold to Amaresco upon completion, correct?
Actually, Amaresco actually performs the construction themselves.
Yeah.
So they will be taking possession of the, uh, project, um, soon after the lease is completed. And they will actually be the entity that's going to construct the array.
So Amaresco was nowhere in that terms of that agreement and none of, none of these numbers are in the agreement. So how do we know that this is going to be come to fruition when these numbers aren't in that agreement? That's my, my question.
Okay. So the numbers are in the lease agreement, uh, in terms of the lease amounts and the escalator, that's all spelled out. And the lease will transfer to Amaresco. So the lease, in fact, what might be helpful is if you look in your, uh, presentation on page, um, third page in landfill, Coventry landfill solar project participation, participants. Okay. This will, this is basically a guideline for who the players are. So WSD Coventry owns the assets known as the solar project. Okay. One of those assets will be the, a fully executed lease. Watershed Solar Development owns WSD Coventry. And my company, ISM Solar, and Watershed Geosynthetics jointly own Watershed Solar Development. The key to this is that Watershed Geo, the company who's responsible for that cap, the warranties and the long-term maintenance, is directly involved in the solar project. And we did this on purpose, because Watershed, even if they don't do anything wrong, okay, in terms of the construction or whatever, if something does go wrong, their reputation's impacted. And Watershed is owned, Watershed is owned by Berkshire Hathaway. So you've got a huge company behind us. And, and that's important, but it's also important to them from a liability standpoint. They didn't want just any, they don't want any third-party solar developers that they don't control having, being able to do what they want on that site. So by, by us partnering together to do the development and then managing Amaresco through the construction process, which is an important part of this, you know, we have SOPs that we've developed at a proprietary for building on that cap because it's unique, which we will share with Amaresco and we will check with them and we'll check on them and we'll make frequent visits to make sure that their, their construction people are following the SOPs and that no harm is being done to that cap. And that is fundamental to our overall approach to this business. Amaresco will construct, own and operate the array. And essentially what will happen is that they will take possession of the operating entity, which is WSD Coventry. The lease goes with it. So they will be obligated to that lease. And if, if for some reason, if you feel more comfortable, um, if you'd like to put the name Amaresco into the lease agreement, we could do that with you as well. So they are, it's clearly defined that they will be the long-term, uh, tenant in the project.
I personally would feel better with that. I don't know about the council, but I personally would feel better if Amaresco's name was in that agreement, kind of holding them party to what we're agreeing to.
Sure.
And it was just one, again, I didn't, I tried to go through the contracts as best I could. And it was just one, again, I didn't, I tried to go through the contracts as best I could. But there was just one conflict that I saw that. So on, under the lease terms. At the, at the bottom, it says, if through no fault of the solar project. The array is required to be moved for repair. The town has an obligation to pay. For removal and reinstallation costs. The removal and reinstallation of 10% of the array's capacity. Is estimated to cost approximately $20,000.
Right.
That's in the Amoresco. And the contract on page eight, it says. The tenant, as its sole cost and expense, will make any necessary repairs and replacements to the array.
Correct. So.
Is that in conflict?
It's not because if something happens to the array itself, okay? We're fully responsible for it. So if, if a storm comes through and wipes out half the array, that's all on us. Okay. But we are building on an environmental site. There's no question about that. And we all go into that in, all over the country, actually. You know, the EPA prefers that we build on contaminated landfills and brownfields. The standard for the industry is that if there's a problem caused relating to the landfill itself. Let's say that something goes wrong with the landfill and it has to be a repair done. To solve whatever's done, gone wrong with the landfill, we have provisions to cover what happens in that case. And we actually had GZA write a memo on this and talk about the likelihood that something would go wrong. Which is extremely slim. Exactly. So we, we went back and forth with this and this was actually something that we negotiated with. With Joe Farside. To make sure that the town was protected in the event that something did go wrong with the, with the. First of all, something goes wrong with the array itself, that's our problem, 100% us. But if it's something caused by an environmental issue. From the pre-existing condition, then the town has a ceiling on what your exposure is as it relates to the array. And that's, that was, that was the terms that we, that we ended up with.
And again, I, I hope you don't mind the, the inquisitive nature of my questions, but this is a one-time deal.
Sure.
For Coventry. This is for the next 25 years. I'm newer to the whole game here. I just want to make sure that we're getting the best deal possible and the best protection for the town.
We, I fully understand that. So to that point, there's another important aspect to this whole thing. Because again, Watershed Geo is involved as a partner in this project. They offer a long-term maintenance agreement. And the town has already agreed to that with the PRP group. And that, that agreement's been fully executed now by the PRP group, of which you folks remember. And the, and Watershed Geo. So they will be on the site regularly doing inspections and maintaining the cap. And we, as the solar array, are going to pay our fair share for it. So what you would normally have to pay for. Fully out of pocket to maintain that array, we're going to pay to maintain the section where the solar array is located. Which basically adds to the overall economic value that flows to the, flows to the town. And those numbers are highlighted. If you look on the spreadsheet. It's towards the end, economic benefits to the town of Coventry. You'll see that we calculate the lease income. The first row is the first 20, initial 25-year term, the lease income. New taxes that'll be paid. These are totally new taxes. The landfill cap reimbursement, the total, just almost $4 million. With a yearly average of $159,000 as the benefit to the town. If we weren't involved, if Watershed wasn't involved, you're doing this, then you would be paying for that maintenance agreement in full. And we're, you know, we're, we're, we're participating in that with you.
Vice President Blank.
I believe the way that I read this contract. We can only go through, well, WSD Coventry LLC. For a solar array if we want the warranty to stay active. If we were to go with a separate company. That we choose, maybe we can get a little bit more money for the energy that's being developed. We would avoid that warranty effectively because this contract, the way that I read it. We are, we've already agreed to go with WSD. Right. In a roundabout way. Correct?
You, you have, the council voted to move forward with the LOI. For all the reasons that we've talked about, as well as another really important one. And that is that there's another voice that's not here tonight, and that's the PRP group. And perhaps Attorney Farside could speak to that a bit, but. They were the same PRP group in Cranston. Same basic members, a few are different and the same lead attorney, David Graham. And the PIP group was adamant that the only way. They would allow solar in Cranston and on your site is if Watershed Geo was involved. Because they have no skin in the game. They're getting nothing out of this. Whereas if some damage is done to it, they have nothing but downside. What gave them, what gives them the confidence is because of Watershed Geo. Their direct involvement in the project. Gave, or gives the assurance to the PIP group that this is something that they're willing to do, given the fact they have no upside from it. So the town benefits. And they're just trying to limit their risk. And that's the exact purpose of the solar power agreement. So there's two different agreements, if you will, that, actually there's three that relate to this project. One is the performance assurance agreement, and that's already been executed. The second is the lease, that's straightforward, that defines your economic benefit. You know, and the rules of the road, so to speak, for use of the, use of the property. And the solar power agreement was designed, was put in place effectively by the PRP group to protect themselves. Of which you're a member. So they're protecting the PRP group and they're protecting the town at the same time. And it goes into detail about what happens if we cause a problem on that site. And how we have to be responsible for it as a developer, as an operator of the solar project. So without that solar power agreement. The PRP group wouldn't have approved this and there'd be no solar array on that site.
Appreciate that. And I know this, this agreement has been discussed for many years now. Upon a council approval. How quickly would the town receive the first payment?
Our goal is to have it online within a year.
Within another year.
Yeah, that's our goal. And you know, days matter. And quite frankly, we have some challenges that we have to meet because a lot of time has gone by. Particularly with off takers and National Grid where if these things go stale too long. We can have problems on our end with other, other stakeholders. So we're anxious to get this wrapped up and moving. I know you're anxious to see the revenue. And believe me, we're motivated to get it online as fast as we can.
And similar to the off takers changing, I, I wonder if it would make sense to have. The consultant do another energy assessment of where energy prices are currently. Versus where they were, I think in 19 or 21, maybe that's when they actually looked at rates, that probably would be helpful. Just like when we're amending for this new company's name, maybe we could amend for a different rate per se.
Well, the rate, the rate, the cost of energy and the rate of the energy really has nothing to do with the lease. They're totally independent from each other. So the lease is with you and that is your economic benefit that flows to you, the lease, the taxes. And the sharing of the warranty agreement and performance agreement with Watershed Geo. That, that's your economic benefit. The, the way it works in Rhode Island is we have third-party off takers. You probably are in a similar situation with other projects, with other, other developers. Where we already have identified the entities that will take the power from the array. And, and that's done via the state's virtual net meter program.
Okay. I, I thought when, I thought it was your group that had somebody speak to us. We were actually talking about the rate per kilowatt hour, I believe. I could be wrong. I'm not, I'm not a. Energy guy, but I'm correct. And I'm pretty sure we were talking about how much we were going to be making. Per kilowatt hour. And that's how we came up with the economic benefit, but I could be wrong.
But we never.
I'm fairly certain that's how it happened.
We never included in the proposal or the LOI or any aspect of this deal. In agreement to sell you the power. Now, quite frankly, if you had the capacity, if you had the demand, we love to sell the power.
He's not saying sell us the power. He's saying the value of each kilowatt, the rate. That it directly contributes to the payment that we get. We're not asking to, to get, get the wattage back. It was a tall Italian-looking man with dark hair and I think it was from Balance Rock. I don't remember his name.
Right.
And he also came to a special session that Jamie and I put together about the glare study. For the, for the people, the people who live near the solar. I don't remember his name, but we definitely had meetings where we talked about the rate at which the wattage would sell for.
So we have, you know, negotiated rates for that with third-party off takers. But they're not related to the lease payment rate. So I'm not sure where that disconnect's coming.
Yeah. It, it sounds like we need to have the Balance Rock people in the room to answer questions related to. What Mr. Angel's asking, that report specifically, and to reassess the wattage piece. You had said you have somebody else who'd like to speak on this. I don't know. I think you said someone from Amoresco had some remarks to make or Mr. Farside.
Sure. So if you have specific questions about Amoresco. I have a representative, Paul Reduka, who could answer any questions you have about your tenant. Do you have any questions about Amoresco?
No, not in particular. I think it, I think a lot of questions, what I'm hearing pertain to. The legal piece of this and the agreement. So maybe Mr. Farside would be best.
Okay. Thank, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
You and I, you and I told him bump it and he did.
Guys, okay. I'll go to members of the council first for particular questions, Mr. Farside. I know that Mr. Angel has question, or you don't have any questions?
I have one question.
Uh, Mr. Perillo.
Hi. So this correspondence today about the different agreements. So there are actually four agreements in total. Is that accurate?
There are four agreements in total, but only three of those relate to the solar development.
Okay. The, the Coventry landfill trust agreement is a separate entity.
Correct.
Okay. Now, the solar power agreement is not in front of the council tonight. It's just the. Lease agreement. So that would be a separate agreement altogether, solar power agreement.
Solar power agreement, to be candid with you. Is, is misnamed in my opinion. It's really an agreement between. The developer and the PRP group to give access to the developer. And the right of the developer to come on and do what it's going to do. While managing the risk between the developer and the PRP group. The town is a 60% member of the PRP group. And so the other 40% members want to make sure, as Mr. Lucini described. That they don't become exposed to some. New phase of liability or a reopener because something happens to the cap while the, the development occurs. So the solar power agreement, I wish now it had a different name and maybe we will rename it. But that's a separate agreement that we, I as council, special counsel to the town have negotiated heavily. Along with David Graham, who is liaison counsel for the PRP group. With Amoresco and Greg's firm. So that's separate from the lease. The lease is reflective of the town's ownership of the landfill land. And its sole right to do what it wants to do with that land. And in this case, it's going to lease that land out to the solar developer. So there's no. Remuneration flowing to the PRP group for the lease of the land. Although I'll know the PRP group attempted to get a piece of that revenue. We rebuff that and that seems to be a dead issue now. So the solar power agreement is, involves the PRP group. Of course, we are a derivative of that by 60%. And the lease is just between the developer and the town.
Thank you for the clarification.
Discussion from members of the council. To me, it just sounds like we have some unanswered questions in terms, it, it sounds like it directly relates to Balance Rock Energy. So. I think if we could have the group here, give us the contact information for them so we could connect with them on. The, the rate discussion that we're talking about here, as well as the analysis that Mr. Angel's looking for. I, I, I personally wouldn't be ready to vote on anything this evening. Member, but that's just me. I don't know if members of the council feel differently the same. All right. So. Anything else update wise? Nope. Okay. Thank you. Moving on now to item A, Robert Sevetti CPA Finance Director interim report. We have tonight 2022, 2023 audit timeline update and budget to actual report.
Good evening. So just brief update on the audit. So the audit commenced last week over at the school department. That's the June 30th fiscal 2022 audit. They're currently still out at the school department, so CLA, who are our auditors. They're working out there, had some discussion with them via email today. They'd be looking, the intent is to get them out here to commence our audit the first week of June. There was discussion of having them come over in the next week or so to do some of the preliminary work. They feel that it's more. Advantages for them to just wait and come on and conduct the both at the same time. So we're looking for the first week of June. For them to come out and commence the town side of the audit. We did have discussions with the audit general's office a week or so ago and we'll be having another conversation with them. I believe next week we're scheduled for another conference call to just give them a definitive timeline. Then the, the other document that you have, they have a report revenue and expenditures by department through April 30th, 2023. Again, that's un-audited, still being worked on. But I also provided in front of everybody's chair this evening, you do have a list of some of the highlights that's in that report. And I can certainly sit here and go through each one if you'd want or. I know you've had a long meeting already, but just, you know, some of the highlights. If you were to look on the back page, it shows a year-to-date deficit through April 30th to 23. Approximately 506,000. But a couple of items to note that. Within there or included in this report, we're currently showing approximately 5.2 million in oppa funding that's going to get pulled out. And get put into its own separate fund. So you'd have to exclude those funds. And in addition, you'll see interest income, that's the interest on the oppa funding. That's also going to be obviously pulled out and put with the oppa. As a separate fund. So if you would exclude those two revenue items, the year-to-date deficit's approximately 5.8 million. And again, keep in mind that that's before significant collections. We have collections that happen in the month of May. So. You're going to see a significant revenue collection. I'm certainly not at this point saying we have a $5.8 million deficit for the year. Once we get through the month of April, excuse me, through the month of May. You know, and see what those collections are, we'll have a better indication, but. I don't envision it being that high, but obviously I can't give you a definitive at this point, which I know. Some of you may be disappointed, but we're still working through. We're trying to catch up a lot. Then I just went through, you know, various pages, some of the line items that. You know, items that popped out to me and may have caught your attention. So Department 100. Which is in the school department, you'll see right now where. We show, we didn't record the payment of the principal or the interest on one of the bond payments. That's actually recorded in another debt service line. So that has to be a reclassification that we need to take place. And when you look at that, you'll see the school department is pretty much in line, which we would anticipate, you know, the state aids online with what was budgeted. Obviously our appropriation transfer to them is happening on a bi-weekly basis or semi-monthly basis as intended. So we don't expect any changes there. Department 210, the town manager's budget, you'll see that we're currently over budget there. We expect to be over budget. Primarily driver is the salary line item for the town manager. We had the payout to the former time town manager. So that's recorded in that budget. So that's why you'll see that's over budget. Department 310, the town clerk. A year-to-date revenues, 875,000. If we project them at the current pace. That would leave our projected revenue at about a million 50,000, which is short about 200,000 from what was budgeted last year. So again, some of these I think will hopefully be helpful as you're trying to analyze. The provisional budget that you passed and see why we may have made some adjustments to some revenue, revenue line items versus what was budgeted in previous years. Town solicitor currently over budgeted by about $80,000 at the current pace, projected to finish the year at approximately 600,000. Some of the miscellaneous income under the finance department. So that includes some of the cell tower rentals as far as. In addition to interest income. It was budgeted 440,000 year-to-date. We're at 243. It was budgeted at four hundred and forty thousand year-to-date. We're at two forty-three. But then again, you need to exclude the upper, the interest on the upper funds, which is going into that separate special revenue fund. Brings year-to-date about a hundred and fifty-seven thousand. So again, I would project that our miscellaneous revenue that was in the previous year budget's going to be anywhere from a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars short. Which once again, why we reduce the revenue. And then with, within the department six-ten, you'll see there's some adjustments, or it looks like we're significantly on the budget and utility charges. Um, some of that's going to change. We do need to allocate some of the utility costs. We actually have a meeting scheduled for later this week with a consultant in the Arcadia group where we have to look at some of the bills and the net metering credits that we signed up for. Uh, so we do have that meeting. Well, hopefully by the end of the week, we'll have that resolved. On page ten in the, in the report, the state aid, telephone tax. We need to have a little bit of discussion there and see how it's being recognized. So the telephone tax, which gets packed, passed through the state of Rhode Island. That comes in every year in August, and I've seen it multiple ways in various communities, some communities that August payment gets booked to the previous fiscal year, some community that August payments for the current fiscal year. So right now it would appear to me that the town of Coventry, the August payment usually pushed back to the previous fiscal year. So that may be something we want to look at and, you know, we can actually budget the actual amount because it's part of the governor's budget right now that we know what we're entitled to for this coming August. So that's what we had budgeted in the current fiscal year, or for the next fiscal year, excuse me. Housing aid, just based on our current receipts and based on, again, information that I was able to obtain from the state. It looks like our housing aid, we're going to be under budget by about two hundred ninety-seven thousand from what was budgeted last fiscal year. And then also I just mentioned the, in that same section, the state aid, you'll see the cares or the upper revenue of five point two million that we're going to be pulling out and putting into a separate fund. Um, motor vehicle taxes on page eleven. The budget included approximately three point five million. And if you look at the state, the state aids of the previous section, you'll see where our state aid for motor vehicle phase outs coming in, which help offset some of that shortfall. Again, not all of it. On page twelve, we still need to record the two hundred thousand dollar transfer in the sewer, uh, to the sewer fund. The police department on page fourteen overtime is already over budget, but within their this, uh, police department's budget, we expect to make up that overage because of savings on compensation of various salary line items. Uh, roads and bridges, the line item that would jump out as you're going through it on page twenty-three is capital lease expenditures. We have not yet allocated that to various departments. So there's some leases that the DPW under roads and bridges department, they get charged for the entire lease and then it gets allocated. So that allocation hasn't taken place yet. Snow removal, and it looks like we're going to have a favorable variance in there for the fiscal year. And that's one of the items we should maybe have discussion about moving some of those funds into different, uh, revolving type funds so that they're available for future periods. So we'll keep you posted on that. Um, vehicle maintenance, it's already over budget by about two hundred fifty-six thousand. Again, some of that's going to be offset once we allocate the gas and oil to various departments. So again, DPW pays the entire bill. That allocation hasn't happened yet. Um, however, I think we're still going to be significant overages and vehicle maintenance due to, uh, truck repairs and sanitation repairs on sanitation, uh, vehicle repairs. Our recreation department, yeah, and it looks like there's going to be a shortfall in some of the revenue. And some of this is just, and looking at the expenditures, uh, keep in mind that on Fund ten-ten, which is our generally fund, uh, general fund, excuse me. It looks like some of the expenses aren't properly allocated there. So I have attached to this report a Fund fifteen-thirty, which is where you'll see some of the revenue and the expenditures for recreation department. So we really have to merge those two together, which is part of our fiscal twenty-four proposed budget. We're looking to do, try to get all the recreation department captured within one, one section in the budget. Page thirty-seven, I know you had asked a question before as far as what's in contingency. So you could see the dollar amount that we spent year-to-date and attached to your this correspondence says the general ledger printout that shows you what we have for contingencies year-to-date. Debt service I just highlighted because it looks like we have favorable variance there or unfavorable variance. But again, that just has to be reallocated to the school department debt service line item. And then the last one is the capital improvements. Um, on page third, uh, which is on page thirty-eight, and then also attached to your the document I presented you shows the budget that was approved last fiscal, for the current fiscal year, five hundred fifty-five thousand. Shows you year-to-date, we spent approximately a hundred eighty-seven thousand. Now, it's my understanding that one of the big items that was in the capital project, um, well, capital improvement budget for the current fiscal year was the generator. If I believe this building, that's currently being priced out and, you know, we looked at that would be purchased by the end of this fiscal year. But if there's any questions, I'll try to answer.
Vice President LeBlanc.
Thank you for the detailed report. Absolutely appreciate it. Um, on number thirteen, um, we seem to list out all the over budgets, but we didn't actually list out what the favorable variance was for. The weather events, I, I mean, I think Kevin usually budgets for eight. I think we had about two. I just didn't, what, what kind of dollar amount are we looking at for that favorable variance? Just ballpark? Is it like fifty grand or is it material?
Again, it's all from the storm standpoint, it looks like we're going to be spending the full salt budget because the salt was purchased, it's going to be stored, which hopefully would reduce some of your costs next year. So your savings would really be based off of the, uh, the payroll cost. So it would look like, based on where we're at here. Forty. Probably roughly, I'd say fifty to sixty thousand in that range.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Um, and then I, I, I see a lot of, uh, revenue misses, uh, based off of the budget. Um, have we considered, um, reaching out to the directors, asking them not to, uh, maybe, maybe they could cut some expenses, they could maybe defer some expenses. Have we communicated anything like that since the revenues are down?
Yeah, the town manager, I think a couple of weeks ago, he submitted a request to everybody called called spending at this point for non-necessities.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Further questions, discussion for members of the council? Thank you. Uh, moving on to report of the town manager, uh, comprehensive plan updates. I believe, uh, packet was put at the place of everyone.
Yes, I had, uh, John Stoddy give us a little, uh, breakdown. Uh, if everyone doesn't know, John Stoddy is leaving the town, May nineteenth. He's taking an opportunity in his branch. Uh, so he'd be leaving. I did get confirmation today of our new planning director. He accepted our offer. He'll be starting on June fifth. So there's going to be a little bit of a gap there where I'm going to probably use, uh, assistant manager Broadbent over there to do some oversight of that department for a couple of weeks. Uh, so basically the comprehensive plan is near finish. Um, I just put in the front what my plans are going forward, basically to meet with Emily from Beta, find out where we are in the contract, uh, what tasks are left, and most importantly, is there money remaining to complete the tasks? I don't plan on giving them another dollar um, going forward. So hopefully they've completed all of their tasks. Um, I'm meeting tomorrow with Chairman Flynn to discuss next steps with him. Uh, the directory, the formal adoption process provided by the state mentions a meeting of the council and a planning commission. You can do it separately or jointly. I'd recommend doing it jointly. One less meeting to attend to go over, uh, the draft of the comprehensive plan. Uh, I looked at it today. It's about like two hundred and fifty pages or so. It's pretty, uh, pretty in-depth. Um, once that meeting is held, the, we send it off to statewide planning for final review. Comes back to us, the council adopts it and has to be incorporated by ordinance into the town code. Um, the timeframe on that, I really don't know. I'm also going to meet with the advisory committee who's been working on this for the last year or so, uh, to see if there's any action items that we really need to implement in order to get this thing going. So that's kind of where we are.
Questions for members of the council on the comprehensive plan update? And just to confirm, um, we had applied for a grant or were going for the technical assistance money for the cost for implementation, right? Or we were getting a match if we got something?
I'll follow up with John on that. I might, I might wear that.
I, this came up at the, uh, league meeting today about, um, the technical, the technical assistance money is available to reimburse for those costs. Um, and I guess now as part of the new housing legislation, part of the offer is if you haven't done your comp plan yet, they're setting aside a couple of million dollars to help offset costs for people in that process. So.
Okay, I'll follow up on that.
Um, I'm going to move on to council president communications briefly, uh, just a reminder for the public, um, that we have two, uh, public hearings on the budget next week, May sixteenth to six thirty PM and May twentieth to ten AM. Um, public's welcome to come and make comments on the budget. Can we confirm that all budget information's up on the town website? Okay, great. Um, upcoming town council events, we're doing our annual Portuguese flag raising with round Day of Portugal on June fifth at five thirty PM right out front here in town hall. Um, and I've been talking with, um, as some know, the president of Round Day of Portugal is also our district one council, uh, school committee member, Ana Isabel Dos Reis Cuto. And we're working on getting some, uh, Portuguese treats as well for people to enjoy. The I lost it. Somebody have the next page in the agenda. Help me. Where did it go? On June thirteenth, before the council meeting, um, we're doing the pride flag raising. And that night I'd like to introduce, um, the proclamation as well. We did this last year. It's really good. Um, I'm hoping to get more students involved this year. I brought it up when I spoke to an American government class at the high school a couple of weeks ago. So um, they're really excited about that. Upcoming town events, Coventry VFW is doing their annual memorial day ceremony on Memorial Day, May twenty-ninth. That starts at eleven AM, I believe. Um, the council as always is invited to high school graduation. That's June seventh. It's a Wednesday, I believe. Um, and that takes place at the Ryan Center. Um, usually we were able to park in that Ram lot, which is right next to the Ryan Center. And then we go up to a special event room on the, on the second floor of the Ryan Center where they have some light refreshments. We put on the regalia and all that and they show us where to process out and we sit on the stage. So, um, it's always a nice sight. And then as we've heard tonight, Town of Coventry Summer Celebration, mark your calendars, June twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth that weekend. Uh, moving on next to, or anyone have any questions? Yes.
Can I just ask that, um, the town shares the dates of those meetings, the seventeenth and the twentieth on social media?
Oh, sixteen, twenty.
Yeah, sorry, the sixteenth and twentieth. Just want to make sure that we're, as a council, putting it out to as many people as possible through social media besides the other ways that we'll announce that.
Thanks for the reminder. Good idea. Um, moving on to introduction of new matters before the council, item A, Rhode Island Municipal Education Compact. This is page one sixteen in your packet. I had mentioned this at our, uh, last meeting. Um, the governor was looking for support on his initiative to um, in, increase, uh, instructional learning time outside of the regular school day and throughout, um, the entire year, not just in the school year. Um, so those communities that wish to, uh, sign on to this effort, um, he's requesting that they sign the Round Municipal Education Compact. Um, we had a phone call with members of the governor's team on this. Um, and, um, we talked about the bullets below, some pretty low hanging fruit. Um, and I don't think many of these even require money to be involved. It's more of just a community effort in terms of prioritizing, um, uh, education and performance. Um, so, uh, I'm hoping tonight, I saw a lot of, a lot of communities, the, the mayor was just kind of signing this and going forward, but I told the governor's office, I wanted the buy-in of the entire town council, um, or at least, you know, the majority, um, to go forward with this. Um, I think it's important, um, we, we always talk about the, the quality of education and the resources. Um, and I think that it's important that, um, we as a municipality also take on this responsibility and make it a priority in addition to the school department. Um, some of the examples of programming that we're seeing in other communities is um, the states helping with initial funding for SAT prep programs. Um, they're providing, uh, tutors from third, third-party companies and the town summer camp to be available to do math or reading or writing projects with them instead of it's just being all recreation. They're looking for any way that they can to, um, inject, uh, education outside of school and outside of the school year. Um, so, uh, the compact is before us on our packet. Um, so just, um, in order to start the discussion, um, ask for a motion to approve the municipal education compact.
I'll make a motion.
A motion from Councilmember Shockley. Second from Councilman Pasqua, Councilmember Shockley.
So I don't know how important it is that this is outside of school, but currently, um, I know last year and this year at least, the high school puts on programming for middle school students where you can go in for a couple of days and do coding or crime scene investigation or welding. There's a number of different programs that they do, um, computer classes, things like that. Um, my kids have gone. It's free and it takes up a little of that time in the summer where even doing, even running around and playing gets boring. Um, so we do, the town does things that I think go along with what this plan is already. Um, so I just wanted to point that out for anyone who didn't know.
Thank you. That's a good point. Yeah, basically they're just looking for us to do things like that more. Um, the goal, the goal eventually is to meet or exceed the average, um, performance that they're seeing in Massachusetts. Any other discussion? Uh, Vice President LeBlanc.
Um, are you looking for us to approve this time?
Yes.
Do we happen to know, I, I feel like a couple of these things are, uh, coming with a cost? Conducting a community-wide needs assessment and audit of existing and desired, uh, of school time opportunities.
They're just examples.
Right. I understand, but are we going to do any of them? And if we are, isn't, isn't there a cost to them? That's all. I, I just, I don't want to just blindly approve something and then say that I don't want to do it because I then found out the cost, but I, I'd rather know what the cost might be.
Uh, Manager Prillo was in the meeting with the governor's office. We asked about this specifically.
Yeah, I believe the governor's office said there will be some funding from municipalities. They didn't say how much. I think the whole package is three or four million dollars. I think that the governor's office has committed to this, but they really haven't said what the breakdown was or anything like that. So you're right, there was a cost, but they haven't really said if, how we're going to be able to benefit from that offset of money yet. Uh, I think it's still at its initial phase. So I can really add.
I just, I mean, we could say yes to this, but then I, I'd like to know what potential cost impact. I, I wouldn't want to say yes to this and then someone's come up to us and say, hey, you guys approved this. Why aren't we doing any of these suggestions?
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's all.
Uh, Councilmember Shockley.
I agree with Councilmember LeBlanc, but I think I also think signing it, if this is something that we're interested in, lets the governor know we're interested. Let us know how we're going to do it.
Yeah, that's, that's essentially what I said to them because I said, look, I said for these other communities that have already signed, the Pawtucketts, the East Providence, the, the Wood Sockets, the Newport's, they have their boys and girls clubs. They have those private entities or, or YMCA that's able to partner with their community to provide these things already and fund them. I said, there's a lot of unanswered questions I have in terms of the support you can provide rural communities like us. Like, we don't have those kind of third-party private partners. Kind of. Um, so I did bring up those points, um, and they had indicated that, you know, they're not looking, just because we signed this, they're not looking for a financial commitment. It's more of a kind of a, the community is, is invested in improving education and, and having conversations in their community. Uh, Vice President LeBlanc.
Totally get it. I understand. Uh, I, it, it does say invest in existing or new community learning programs. Uh, this just, it just sounds like kindergarten and then it being unfunded and then the, the local, the, the local town and cities have to pay for it going forward. I mean, it wants, uh, you know, sample, uh, annual community forums and, you know, to educate people on this. Uh, again, I just feel like it's going to be a one-time funding from the state and then the state's going to say, yep, going forward, it's on you. And that's my biggest fear. That's all.
Does Does, do members of the council have questions they'd like me to ask the governor's office instead?
I'm guessing he's not going to know funding until the end of June anyway. When he sees what budget gets approved. So, I mean, I, like I said, from my mind, we're saying, yes, we're interested in helping our local students improve their education. And if there are ways that the state wants to help us do that, then we're in.
That too, and I think a lot of the language is loose. The Town of Coventry will explore participating and creating learning opportunities. So, um, I don't know, but, um, still Sir Angel.
You could vote to approve the compact subject to the state providing funding. That's what the council wants to do.
Uh, do I hear an amendment to the motion?
I would make that amended.
Um, a amended amendment to the motion by Vice President LeBlanc to approve the compact contingent upon, um, funding source. Do I hear a second for the amendment?
Second.
Second from Councilman Pasqua, discussion on the amended amendment for the motion. Councilmember Shockley.
That doesn't, uh, tie our hands at all, right? Like say we decide, wow, this really worked. This was a great program. And even if the state isn't going to fund it, we'd like to try to find the funding for it. Um, as long as it doesn't tie our hands at all to say we'd like the state to do the funding.
Councilwoman LeBlanc.
It, whoa. Retired. It feels like this is a is a request from the governor's office for us to consider working with them in some way to show the importance of education within the community and enhancing programs any way we can. So the, the way I'm reading this is are you committed to doing something to help your community? And like you mentioned, we do have a few of these things that actually happen. But I, it, I think that for many of us, we've been doing this for many years now. So I'm ready to say yes without the contingency. Maybe, maybe what we need to do is take off those examples. Like we're ready to, to do something and then just those aren't the examples that we end up doing. Because then if they don't provide any funding, are we, are we not supporting the initiative to that, or the spirit of the initiative to try where we can to invest in the community um, for educational programs. So it just, it just feels like the spirit is to
Make an effort.
Make an effort to show a commitment that we, we will somehow make an effort. But if it's only if they give us funding, like I don't want to only, i- if they don't give us any funding, are we not going to make a commitment to the students in our, in our districts? Like that's.
Pretty sure we are with giving sixty-eight percent of our budget to the schools.
We don't get, we don't give, I'm not, I'm not done with that comment. So we don't, I wouldn't. Most, most locations in, um, in many cities and towns in Rhode Islands and the country give a large portion of their budget to education. So I, I don't, I don't know if that's the debate tonight, but it feels like the spirit of this is are we willing to look at initiatives as a council to bring agenda items in to promote on social media? Um, different, different things like that. So, um, so, some of this costs nothing. Because one of the examples is promoted on social media. What, most of us have promoted the library and the, and the things that they're doing. So I just, it feels like the spirit is to say whether or not we could be committed to doing something in our community and I, I would support that without the amendment.
I'll also say, I think President Lima and going to a civics class, we're doing it. You know, we're bringing the community into the school to explain the importance of civics. You know, that's in my mind, kind of part of this. I think trying to move them out of the school, which I know we're trying to do as well. So we're already supporting this. Um, and I think because it is a governor's initiative, showing that we're a community that supports this, it's probably kind of important as well as we look to do future projects.
Uh, further discussion on the amended motion? Uh, so we're back to the main motion. Um, any further discussion on approval of the municipal education compact? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember LeBlanc? Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Uh, moving on to public comment for undocketed items, any members of the public here in council chambers? Uh, any members on Zoom, public comment on undocketed items? Going once, going twice, three times, public comment on undocketed items is now closed. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn at ten twenty-five P M.
Baker motion.
Motion from Councilmember Shockley.
Oh, second.
Second from Vice President LeBlanc, all those in favor?